The whole meeting for Wednesday, April 9. We had a fairly long in-camera session, but we are reconvening at 7:17. We turn now to item four, delegations. We have no delegations other than a presentation later in the agenda. Move to item five, 5.1, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for February 12, 2025. Councillor Wegener.
I move that council adopt the February 12, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meetings as presented in attachment one.
Thank you. I'll call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. We move now to item six, business, 6.1, Strathmore Legion Crosswalk. This is the one that Councillor Wegener crosses many, many times in a typical week.
To get to the law?
To get to the Legion. Good evening, Ethan, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, your worship and council. I'll keep this one quick. So, as you're aware, the Legion came to council, I believe it was just before Christmas, requesting a crosswalk adjacent to their facility. We've done some research and some work in the background. One of the things we've noted is that the Legion actually has a template, which they've put out recently. I did include it in your agenda package, so it's basically a standard crosswalk with a large maple leaf and some writing, both English and French. The other thing I want to note is that the Engineering Department, since the last fall, has put together a standards or guidelines for commemorative crosswalks or non-standard crosswalks. Part of that was, as you are aware, we have the Pride Crosswalk beside the building here, and it can become slippery. And the reason for that is that it's a fully painted surface. You're not allowing the grit and the asphalt to be exposed and used as it's intended to be. So, we've gone through some work in terms of comparing to other municipalities, best practices, that sort of thing, to ensure that that doesn't happen again. And we are quite confident that the template that the Legion has would meet those guidelines. If we had to slightly alter, I'm sure we could do that to still appease the Legion, but meet our guidelines and any safety standards. So, outside of that, I will take questions from council. Basically, if council wishes to proceed with this, I would bring this back next meeting, just because it would require a motion from council to proceed. The Pride Crosswalk was done at no cost to the town. We simply provided barricades for them as a safety measure, but they provided all of the materials, they provided all of the labor. So, I know that was not necessarily the request from the Legion, but council can do as they wish so. So, I'll take questions if there are any. Thank you.
Councillor, Deputy Mayor Mitzner.
Is there a type of paint, like, that glows in the dark? Like, so for the white area or something, so it kind of lights up until it gets really dark?
I believe that there would be an option, it would be a non-standard option. Typically, road paints will have, like, a glass bead in them, and what that will do is that will reflect light that's shone on it, but it's not one that, say, absorbs light and is luminescent when it gets dark.
Any other questions for Ethan? So, do you get a sense of where we are? We're hoping that this will come back. Council's good with that?
Will council like this to come back next meeting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, definitely. Councillor Langmaid?
Sorry, the only question I have, I just want some clarification. Are we saying that we'd like to see it come back with a monetary amount attached for the town to complete the work? Or are we talking about the idea, are we agreeing to the fact that we agree to the idea of the crosswalk in principle? I just want to make sure that I'm kind of clear on what we're talking about here, just and simply for the fact that we do have one organization that has painted a crosswalk on their own dime twice now. I am okay with looking at a policy that would allow for the town to support these types of projects, but I would like it to be consistent within the community, that we either agree to paint crosswalks for all community organizations who request one, or ones that are approved, whatever that looks like, or we ask those organizations to fund themselves consistently across the board.
So, would you want a couple of options within the presentation from Ethan at the next meeting?
I suppose, yeah, I think there's kind of two options. Either we agree to pay for the town to fund them all, or we agree that the town funds none, and that we welcome community organizations to bring them forward and to do them, but that they are expected to fund them at their expense.
Does that funding at their own expense also include in-kind work done by our staff to potentially paint that crosswalk?
That's a good question, and I think that's a good point up for discussion by council. It could include it or not, I'm not sure.
I'll turn to CAO Scoble first, and then Deputy Mayor Mitzner.
Just one general comment. So, Ethan had mentioned we've filled specifications now. You know, we did have some slipping issues and that. So, these are a more expensive road paint in our specification now, so, you know, I guess the cost of painting any crosswalk in town under these standards would go up versus materials that have been used in the past, so just a general comment there.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Mitzner.
In their original presentation to the town, were they not requesting two crosswalks?
Yes, they were. So, I guess that could be an option of council if they wanted to support one and not two. I put in the report, you know, that I'm estimating between $2,000 and $5,000 per crosswalk, so you can take that into consideration. Just so you are aware, we did price out stencils so that we could do this properly. Stencils themselves are about $1,000.
But couldn't...
They are definitely reusable, yes.
Couldn't we ideally get away with one from the Alliance parking lot to the Legion?
That's definitely an option if council wishes to do so.
Thank you.
Question for Lead Services. Jonathan, do you see this as something that a policy might come to us as far as crosswalks? Maybe CAO Scoble, you could weigh in on that as well?
I'll start off, but I'll let Jonathan take over. I think, you know, we are working on a general policy, but there was two motions made that evening, one specific to the Legion, which is before you tonight, and then we are bringing the other motion back, which was a general policy.
So, Councillor Langmaid, I think you might have some, and they're good reservations, too, that you don't want to be excluding groups over another. So, I can see how we would want to have something in place for all potential crosswalks as far as how to deal with them. That might be the safest for our organization moving forward. Councillor Langmaid?
I agree. I think my preference would be to see the overall policy first and kind of have council decide where we want to go on that before we start making decisions on individual organizations. And I just want to be clear, I fully support the idea of the Legion Crosswalk, and I hope I get to maybe grab a paintbrush and join in on the painting, but it's just in terms of making sure that council has a clear path forward and that we approach these things with equity. My preference would be to see the overall policy first and then deal with individual projects after that.
Councillor Peterson?
Thank you, worship. Councillor Langmaid, do you see an opportunity for maybe the task force to weigh in on this as a part of the inclusion portion of what the council's trying to achieve? And I mean, weigh in in the sense of, you know, this community-based group of, you know, supporters that are tasked with a very specific set of priorities for the town through the strategic planning portion?
May I respond? Should I wait? Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if I should wait for you to... No, I was, sorry, I was waiting to see if maybe you wanted me to wait for you to call on me first. I do think that it's possible that this could be a topic that the task force could either weigh in on, make a decision on, and provide a feedback to council on. We haven't had a chance to meet as the Culture and Wellness Task Force since the new adoption of the revised Terms of Reference, so we haven't identified specific initiatives that that task force will be taking on yet. That's something that I could definitely bring to the task force as a potential idea at our next meeting, which I think will be possibly somewhere near the end of this month, but the date hasn't been set yet. But that, so, it's not a very direct answer, but it's a possibly, and it's something that I can bring to them to discuss further.
Ethan, quick question for you. Should this take a while, how far into the fall can you go as far as temperature-wise painting crosswalks and things?
I mean, obviously, it's weather-dependent. I would probably suggest no later than mid-September, just to be safe. I mean, we all know that we've had some fairly warm falls and that we might have the opportunity to do so, but I would target mid-September at the latest.
Okay, so the hope would be we'd have an answer or a solution before Remembrance Day, which I think is really important to the Legion members to have...
And if I recall, the Legion...
The timings for their anniversary.
Oh, right.
The hundreds' anniversary, yeah.
I forgot that.
Yeah, so we're running out of time.
Yeah, when is that again?
Sorry, I thought the anniversary was in 2026, but I may be mistaken.
Yeah, I think you are actually correct. The building was 2022, but the club, I think, slightly later.
I think that could be clarified, yes.
Okay, well, we'll keep that all in mind. Melissa, that'll be your homework, maybe, to check on when their anniversary is. Double-check that. Thank you, Ethan. Any other questions for Ethan? Thank you very much again.
Sorry, if I may, are we not bringing it back next week? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think, it looks like we want to wait a bit and collect a little more information and see how your meeting goes with the Community Task Force? No?
I could discuss it with the task force. I'm not sure, I can't guarantee that they'll choose it as an initiative that they want to weigh in on or not. I think what, I think what I said, what I was hoping we would wait for is the overall policy first.
So, and that's my understanding, too, if I might, your worship. I think, you know, we already dealt with this, you know, through motion once before, so we can deal with this particular one as a one-off, and then look to the task force and our senior leadership for future direction.
And it would be my hope that nobody would be really upset about doing something like this for the Royal Canadian Legion and its veterans, so I think that's great. So, Ethan, does that give you clarification? You can bring it forward next week? Okay, thank you. Councillor Langmaid?
Sorry, your worship, just after a quick Google search, it does look like the Legion is turning... Oh, wait, no, now there's something else. Never mind, I'm finding disagreeing numbers. It's either this year or next year. I'll research further.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Langmaid. Thank you, Ethan. Do you have enough to go on there?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, we move now to the next item of business, 6.2, Water Utility Rate Options, page 26.
Thank you, your worship and council. Good to be back. So, this presentation outlines some options for you on variable water rates to discourage excessive use as an alternative to what we currently have in enforcement measures. Hey!
Right?
Sorry. So, council's seen these numbers in the past, so just an indicator of the significant water use we already have in this community. And you, as you all know, that as the community grows, our water use will increase. Now, obviously, as we are looking to find water efficiencies, we hope that each individual user uses a little less water and that the water we have will stretch even further, but that's not necessarily the point of today's discussion. The other thing that we want to be aware of is our storage capacity. So, as you know as well, we're working on the Wildflower Reservoir upgrades this year, which will eventually mean Brentwood can be decommissioned as we are extending its life beyond what is typical. And so, therefore, water consciousness and, again, saving water is very important. So, the town's current utility rates are as follows. So, it's $3.07 for all users, doesn't matter if you're a commercial, residential, industrial, any other type of user. We then have a hydrant consumption rate, and this is primarily for construction purposes, $6.80. And then finally, $6.09 if you are purchasing from the bulk water station. Just want to clarify that this is only the variable rate, there's also the fixed fees that each user sees on their utility bill based on their meter size. So, to achieve the methodology of what I'm trying to present here tonight is water usage for essential uses should not be penalized. Basically, everybody has the right to use the water they need to live. That's, I think, understandable by most. A manicured and healthy yard, we feel, is an owner's right. You have the right to have a green yard and to have living plants in your yard. However, excessive usage is one that we think that should be penalized, and possibly through utility rates or other enforcement measures. We know we have current enforcement measures, but is there a way to, I'll call it self-penalize? And so, average monthly residential usage in the town of Strathmore from November to March is about 11.3 cubes. Many are below this, but the average is 11.3. A healthy lawn and plants requires 25 millimeters per week of water. That includes rainfall. So, if we look at, say, an average R1-style home on an average-sized lot, somewhere between 10 and 12 cubes of water would achieve that 25 millimeters, assuming no rain. So, to simplify that, we have 12 cubes of water for essential use, and we have 12 cubes of water for your healthy lawn. Now, some exceptions to this obviously exist. That would be commercial, construction, bulk water users. Large households, such as multi-generational, may have more members within the house, and that 12 may not exactly fit them. Large-lot homes, although there's not many in town, they may require more than that 12 cubes to achieve the same type of landscaping, but to keep things generally the same for all, the 12 and 12 is kind of where we're at. So, here's a proposal. A proposal would be is that you have your basic usage, which is anywhere between 0 and 12 cubes. You have your, what I'll call, leisure usage, which is 12 to 24 cubes. And we do have some irrigation meters in town, so I would argue that this is probably the most appropriate rate for that as well. And then what we would have is excessive use, and this is where we think that charging a higher rate may provide that penalty to stop excessive use within the town. It doesn't happen too often, but there are definitely circumstances, and there are definitely users within the town who, what we would consider excessive. Now, to give you a comparison, somebody who used 12 cubes in a month, they're probably...
Ethan, could I just interrupt?
Absolutely.
Could you go back one slide? I just have a question on the excess.
Yes.
So, is that the number, 24 cubic meters? Is that the number where they would pay the higher rate when they go over that?
After you're over 24 cubes, yes. So, between 0 and 12, you would pay the $3. Between 12 and 24, you would pay $3.25, and then once you started using over 24 is when you would pay $6.50.
Okay, and is there a period of time that that usage...
This would be per month.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, to compare, if someone used 12 cubes a month, you can see the difference between the current rates and the proposed rates is 84 cents. It's very marginal. For someone who used 24 cubes in a month, the difference in rates between the proposed and the current, about $1.50, a little less than that. So, you can see that the whole intent here is that between 0 and 24 cubes, basically, you're not paying anything different than what you are now. The water rate essentially doesn't change. However, once you start getting into 25 cubes, 30 cubes, 35 cubes, 50 cubes, that's where the difference in the current rate and the proposed rate starts to separate. And you can see this is what we would consider, call that self-regulating or penalizing yourself by overusing water. Now, understanding that there are exceptions, not everybody is the same house with the same number of people and all that kind of things, there is a second proposal, and I'll caveat this before I get too deep into it, that we wouldn't be able to implement an idea like this until we upgrade our softwares. This is something that we would need to, you know, which is something that's already in the works, but we would have to wait for that process to be finished before something like this could be implemented. And the thought with this one is that everybody has their own average. So, you take what people use in the months of January through March, which is typically your coldest months, nobody's using water outside of their house, and that's how you know how much is considered essential. The difference here is that, you know, a family that is small may only use four, five, six cubes in a month, but a large family may use 13, 14, 15 cubes in a month simply to live. So, this is where neither one is being treated differently. Then on top of that, we would add that 12 cubes for leisure use. Again, most households and lot sizes are standardized, so that's where we feel we can't start getting too deep into the weeds on differences in that case, and 12 fits a very large majority. And then, of course, your excess would be your average plus 12, where you would get into the excess. So, this, the intent here, as I noted, is to try and make it fair to absolutely everybody, but obviously, you get a little more in-depth on usage, and you've got to get more in-depth on individual billings, and it's less regimented, I guess is the way to put it. Now, the other thought process is we do have water restrictions, and we...
Just on that last slide, it said non-residential. Can you...
So, one of the things, and I've had this for the other ones as well, so basically, the thought is that the change in rates would only be for residential users. So, commercial users, industrial users, all those, the rate we have now is sufficient, and we don't see it being abused. So, the other thing is we have water restrictions, and we do know that when water restrictions are in places when it's more important to be saving water, it's more important to be ensuring that people aren't abusing the use of water. And Phase 1 and Phase 2 restrictions generally are minor, sometimes they're even voluntary, and they're typically implemented in cases where it's not a severe situation. We are encouraging people to use less water, but it's not imminent risk of running out of water or anything to that effect. Phase 3 and Phase 4 is when we really start to see that risk of water source being limited or reduced. So, the thought is, well, what if we take that excess rate and charge even more, but only do it when you're in a water restriction? The other reason I'm saying that we could do this only in Phase 3 and Phase 4 is that perception of, oh, the town's putting water restrictions in so they can collect more money. I don't want that perception to be out there. So, with Phase 1 and Phase 2, I wouldn't suggest changing the water rates in a water restriction Phase 1 and Phase 2, but potentially Phase 3 and Phase 4. So, that's just another idea that's out there. The biggest thing with enforcement is if it's not physically witnessed by one of our bylaw officers, they likely can't write a ticket. If somebody gets a picture, it's probably not sufficient, even with a timestamp. If somebody gets a video with a timestamp, probably our enforcement officers could do something about it, but that's kind of the best-case scenario. So, unless our enforcement officers are driving around and see it exactly when it happens, we're not really enforcing these restrictions at all. So, with that, I've given you a couple of ideas that could be implemented. You know, on a side note, I think that our current rates are currently fair, and for those who don't abuse the water usage are paying what they should be paying. However, these are a couple of options which we could interest in the future on that excessive usage, and how does it make sense to discourage excessive use? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Mitzner?
So, I have a question. If Buddy is watering his lawn from dark to dusk, don't you have that system where you can go in and see per household, the amount of water's been used within a specific time?
We do. The hard part is unless it's witnessed, we don't know it's being used for outdoor use. So, they will get charged the rate for usage of water, but if it's in a condition where it's, say, outdoor watering restrictions, again, unless it's witnessed, we don't know that it's actually happening outside of the home. It could be, unfortunately, a leak in the house, but again, it has to be physically witnessed.
Any other questions for Ethan on the water rates? Seeing none, thank you, Ethan. We move now to item 6.3, 2024 Assessment Update for the 2025 Taxes. Riley, good evening again, and welcome.
Good evening, your worship, and members of council. David Clark and Ken Waters from our assessors at Wildrose Assessment will be presenting this information, just for information for council, and they will field any questions council may have after the fact. Wildrose has been our assessor since April 2023 or so, so, like I mentioned, I will pass it over to David and Ken.
Thanks for having us. I guess with our presentation this evening, our hope is to give kind of an assessment 101, an overview of our process, and hopefully give some context to why and how assessments are where they're at. That being said, I'd like to start with kind of a statement where I know that often media and that like to dig on an average assessment, and what I wanted to say is I hope that this presentation takes us on a journey where we can see that an average assessment is an important figure, but it's only a small bit piece of the process that we go through and hopefully give some context to that. Is there a place I have to point? Yeah, okay. Okay, you'd be my personal clicker. Okay, thanks. So, of course, just an outline. What I hope, how, excuse me, what I hope to do with the presentation is not just read it verbatim, I think everyone on council would appreciate that. So, I might go through some slides quickly, but we can definitely circle back if there's any questions that come up. So, as Riley mentioned, we're with Wildrose, we're a contracted assessor, fairly new to your municipality, and it's a different setup than administration and council is used to. You had in-house staff before. So, what is, just what is property assessment? It's the tool by which the property tax burden of a municipality is distributed. Our property assessments are a tool by which we assign value to property for that taxation And the vast majority of property, the assessments are based off of a market value estimate. Some legislation noted there that references how that should be done. There's also property that has regulated value. The assessment is determined by regulation and by the province. Simple example would be farmland, railway, designated industrial property. So, what is assessed? Overall, overarching is property. What is that? Land improvements, and land and improvements, and then it cascades down to describe those. There's two overarching types of property, residential, of course, different categories therein, and non-residential property, again, different categories therein described below. There are also non-accessible property, I guess we can call it, municipal infrastructure, water sewer systems, as described in the prior. There are also property that is deemed exempt from taxation. Kind of have a quick-hit list that goes through some of those. I like to say, from our perspective, by default, all property is taxable and only made, achieves exemption through the categories listed below. Here are some examples of property that is exempt from taxation. So, how do we do all this? There is legislation that outlines how we prepare, or how we must prepare property assessments, basically done through mass appraisal, right? We're not individually appraising each property, it's done through mass appraisal. Mass appraisal defined. And then going on to how the property can change from year to year, there's basically two main drivers that change a property value from year to year. Number one is you might have made some sort of change to your specific property. Examples that I have there, new construction, obviously, if you had a bare piece of land, you build upon it, that's going to drive an assessment change. You may also renovate or add something to your property. Basement finish is a very common example. That adds to the market value of your property, therefore adds to the assessed value of your property. There's other changes, maybe an uncommon one, someone has a, you know, disaster like a fire or flood, that's going to diminish the value of that property, at least for a period of time. Then move on to how do we determine market value? There's three high-level approaches to that. One being a market-modified cost. Vast majority of our, excuse me, vast majority of our residential properties, your kind of standard single-family homes are mostly determined through the market-modified cost approach. There's an income approach, these are generally non-residential properties, so we're deriving the value of that property through the rent it generates. And then, third, there's a sales comparison approach where these are on a per-unit basis. These are, these would be restricted to very homogeneous property types, maybe something something like a storage locker in a condo or something where it's it's just very easy to compare and there's really, really no difference from one unit to the next. We're gonna, we're gonna touch on this slide again, but I don't know if council or administration has heard the word asset before, but it's a system by which our assessments are judged. We're, we send in our information to the government and it's it's reviewed there. This touches on that. I'm I'm gonna skip over this one mostly. A lot of the information on that slide is touched on in later slides.
Excuse me, we just might have one question here. Counselor Wagoner.
Can we ask questions as you go along?
Uh, sure.
So if I can wait till the end, whatever works.
Let's do it now. You seem you seem eager and prepared.
Well, not sure about that.
Okay.
A couple of slides back, you said assessments and you you meant you gave examples, two stories, bungalows, and that, are they assessed differently?
Yes, and I do touch on it in further slides, but yeah, we start at a high level and look at. We, okay, we we look, yes, bungalows versus two stories versus by levels versus split levels, they are looked at separately. There has to be sufficient market evidence in any one of those categories to make make changes to each one.
Okay.
So I'm going, I'm going to go through kind of a more specific example, but maybe we can cross that.
Yeah, if, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it when you get there. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Okay.
So on this one where you say the cost approach, the income approach and the sales comparison, that's the same concept for appraisals. So assessment is same same as an appraisal?
That high level approach is the same. The methodology in which that's completed is different, right? An appraisal is a is valuing one property at one, at one specific period of time, right? Whereas we're valuing all property across the municipality at one given time, but it's more of a a generalized approach. Of course, the cost of doing an appraisal of every property every year would be astronomical, so we're using kind of statistical data to apply value to properties that didn't sell using market evidence of those that did sell.
So just a couple other questions. So you're assessed on your land and then you're assessed on your improvements. So if you have one subdivision where they're all same-sized lots, does that subdivision, is that land assessment always the same per property and then the variance is with the improvement?
If they were all exactly the same, that would be the case.
Well, Strathhaven, for example.
Well, again, there's different characteristics of lots that can be the same size, that can vary, have influences on that lot that can vary within the same subdivision. For example, it could be considered undesirable to back on to a major, major road, so there might be an influence for traffic that, let's use an example of a common, a 6,000 square foot lot on this side of the street backs a major thoroughfare. On the opposite side of the street is the same 6,000 square foot lot, but it does, it does not back that negative influence. Maybe it actually backs onto a park, positive influence. So although those two are the same size in the same neighborhood, there's characteristics to those lots that vary their value.
So is there a value to a rear alley versus common back fence?
I don't believe we have an accounting made for back alley specifically.
Okay. And then one more question. Do we not do an annual assessment every five years?
So I think what you're referring to is a reassessment cycle. Yes, there is a a five-year cycle of reassessment. I believe by definition, it's actually 20%, which is, you know, the same thing as once every five years, but the population, of course, changes. So yes, property should be touched approximately once every five years.
And here's just a short story. So you can be assessed to on things that you take out of your property, which I was never aware of. I had an indoor swimming pool that was taken out 10 years prior to, and when it was brought to my attention, I actually paid $1,500 more per year for taxes for those 10 years because I did not take a permit to remove my indoor swimming pool. So I was assessed with a pool. But that's, that's past history. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we do obviously rely on, on, now, that's a specific example, but we do rely on permits to give us information. On a reassessment cycle, we don't necessarily reach every person every five years and it, you know, I'm, that may have occurred and and that's, that's not a good example, of course, but the goal is to make sure that we're up to date on the property record. I'm good to continue? I believe I was on proceeding to slide 22, if you, if you have a paper copy to follow along. So I think this slide is a is a very good one to kind of describe how property assessments can be done on, you know, how we have a 400, in this example, $460,000 assessment on a variety of properties here that had different sales. We don't know the conditions of any one sale, right? So we may have a situation where a buyer is, just falls in love and they just need to buy this house and it ends up selling higher than the exact same house where, you know, the seller is motivated to sell for whatever their personal reasons are. So this example, I would suggest, is maybe a little extreme, but the point to this slide is to show we can have a variance in sale prices of a, of a similar property or the same property where it has, ends up with the same assessment. The column ASR refers to assessment to sales ratio. That's kind of a a guide that is used in assessment to determine if our assessment, like the accuracy of the assessment in relation to the sale price. So the top property example sold for 550, assessed for 460, that assessment to sale ratio 84%. So as you go down, you can see that these properties in this example sold, you know, again, this is an extreme example, sold ranging from 550 to 395, where the medium, median, sorry, median value is between that 99 and 103. At the bottom summarized, I guess, 101 is the, is the median suggests that these properties in this example category would pass.
That's not a phone call, sorry. It's just to let me know if I'm about to have a stroke. Counselor Langmaid?
Thank you, worship. At what point would you see an ASR go either so high or so low that it's potentially identifying an inaccuracy in the assessment?
Yeah, we, we, we do our best to review every sale. Definitely, you know, if this was, was a real life example, you know, anything, so as it states on the left-hand column, MRAT, that's a piece of legislation, matters relating to assessment of taxation, has a standard that the category should be be between 95 and 105% ASR. We're judged on that stratum of properties, not each individual one, but it's concerning when a property falls outside of that plus or minus 5%. They get a little extra scrutiny, right? So, you know, a property at the 116% is concerning, so are the properties, you know, on the, on the other extreme. So we would do our best to investigate and try to find, is there something specifically that may have been missed with that property that drove that price higher or lower? Or is there some sort of work that's been done that we didn't know, it wasn't permitted, right? Someone finished their basement, didn't pull a permit, that property sells much higher than we would expect. Upon review, we find, oh, it has a finished basement. Once we add that to the assessment, maybe it brings that number more in line with where we would expect it to be in relation to the other sales of similar homes.
So are you assessed on the sale price? So Buddy sells his house for 460 and his taxes are, I'm going to say, average, but he gets 600 for that house now because there's no inventory. Is that house then assessed at 600?
No, not necessarily. He's going to be, so in you, in that example, so this house originally was 460 and now sold for 600. That $600,000 sale would fall into the pool of sales in that given year.
So be averaged over the number of?
If a whole bunch of properties sold and the, and the, the median sale price was 600, that, that's not the right way to look at it, but if the median suggested that should be assessed for 600,000, then yes, that would go to 600,000.
So if you pay 600,000 for your house, is your house not worth 600,000? That's not what you're assessed on?
No, we don't assess your property, what you specifically paid for it. Goes back to what I said, I don't know the conditions of any one sale. Maybe if you overpaid for your property, should you then overpay for your taxes indefinitely? On the flip side, if you got a deal on your property, should you then get a deal on your property taxes indefinitely? No. So we want that's, again, this is an extreme example, but shows the example, there's a, there's a range of sale prices that can occur on the same property. So that's why we look for medians over multiple sales to help us to to determine what that assessed value of that property should be.
So if property values went up 30% overall in the community, would the assessment not go up 30% in the community?
Yes, generally. Now, again, I think Counselor Richard had mentioned, do you not assess two stories different from bungalows, different from by levels and so on? We would look at those. Generally speaking, the demand for those property types does vary, so we don't, we wouldn't paint an entire subdivision or community with, in your example, 30, 31% increase. But if that's what each of those categories suggested with sales, then yes.
Okay, so is our existing home product going to go up based on the new construction costs in the community? So that same house now, because of the concrete, the drywall, the roof, is going to be X amount more, does that now make the used product worth the same?
Not really, no. So new, new home construction is a little, not complex, but a little different. So what can happen in new home construction is I might, I'll, I'll use myself an example. I want to buy a new home in a new neighborhood. I might find a lot that I love, buyer that I, or a builder that I want to construct my home. I might strike a contract before a shovel hits the dirt. So I, right, that's one scenario. Another scenario might be that exact same home is built on spec without a buyer. It takes eight months, whatever, 10 months, then maybe it sits on the market for a couple months. It might be a year later that house sells. Okay? When did that house trans, so in my two examples, those houses sold a year apart. So new construction can be tricky because we don't necessarily know when that deal was struck. What we use for our date of sale is the day the title transferred. Those two properties might transfer on the same day, right? The title transfer might happen on the same day. The builder might carry the cost, the builder will carry the cost on the spec home. It might also carry a cost on the, the one where I made a contract before shovel hit dirt.
So how did you do that when land titles was six months behind?
Then everyone was six months behind. We're still, like, yeah, that, we're, that's our, our tool by which to determine sale date is title transfer date. It's, in the history of my, my employee, it's never been on that, like, it just, it's impossible to happen on that date. We expect a lag, but it happens to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Back to Counselor Langmaid.
Thank you. So just to kind of follow up on my question, then, if I understand correctly, you, you can't, say if I bought a house and I know what I paid for it and then I saw my assessment come in the next year and, and it was outside of that 95 to 105 range, you can't really assess your own home based on what you paid for it versus what the assessment came at against that thing, MRAT, because it's done on a global scale. So, for example, because I'm a nerd, I started doing some math of the houses in my neighborhood just to try and figure this out. And I, I found one house that had sold within that last year for 475,000 and then it was assessed at 592, putting it at 125%, which is, falls way outside of that range of 95 to 105. But what I'm understanding is that you can't use an individual homes calculation like that to determine whether the assessment is, is off or not because it's done on a global scale throughout the community.
Correct, but that would raise a flag, right? If we're off, I don't know the exact, what hundred, over $1,000.
It was, it was 475 and then assessed at 592 after, and it sold in October of 2023. I did, I did not knock on their door. I didn't think that would be appropriate.
But yeah, so, so that would raise a flag that we're probab, so we were over-assessed on this particular example, right? That would, we would want to know why.
So it, so you can use individual numbers like that to see, you know, on, if it, if it is excessive that, to that amount, it should be raising a flag in the system somewhere.
But it wouldn't, we wouldn't then make its assessment the sale price. It's not a one-to-one relationship like that, right? Maybe it might suggest that that property is incorrectly assessed due to a, a classification error or, or incorrect information, but no, we would not move, we don't assess one property based off one sale.
Okay. So you can use it a bit as a guidepost, but it's not a rule. Guidepost to just determine whether, whether or not, just, I guess, a sanity check, is this reasonable or not, but it's not a determinant of, it should be this or that, it's just,
Right.
this warrants a, a second look.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, I think maybe to give a little context as well that I haven't covered off yet, but there's lots of questions and I think more context is, is better here. This year's property assessments that are out, their estimate of, the value on them, the estimate of market value on them is based in the prior July. So July 1st, 2024 is the, is the common date of comparison. So that's the date we would be, be interested in. But as you know, and as I'll, I'll get to, property values have risen quite dramatically in Strathmore and across a lot of Alberta over the last number of years. So touching a bit to your example of property that sold October 2023, what we would do and what we're required to do through legislation is time adjust those sales. So in essence, move that sale as if it happened July 1st, 2024. So I don't recall the number you'd said, 475. So I don't have figures to tell me what the time adjustment and I'm not quite that quick on the calculator, but, you know, a property that sold for 475 in October might be equivalent to it selling in July, on July 1st, 2024 for 525. I don't know, I'm, I'm picking a number, but it's then moved with the market to the sale date. That, and further context, we use three years' worth of data, three years' worth of sales. So in this last year, July 2021, July 1st, 2021, sales from that point to July 1st, 2024, to get enough data to tell us where, where the market is.
Deputy Mayor Mitzner.
Deputy Mayor Mitsner.
A quick question, do you take into evaluate depreciation based on your build?
Yes, we do.
Like, so the downtown core is based, yeah?
Every property, yes, yeah. Well, every market, the cost, the market applied cost approach, yes. So we, yes, a home that was built in nineteen seventy, the exact same home if it were built in nineteen ninety or yesterday is gonna have a different value due to depreciation. People, that's a very common question. I did nothing to my house. How can, the most common example, I own a manufactured home, mobile home. In many owners' opinion, they don't appreciate in the market. My unit is a year older than it was last year, how could it possibly go up? Well, it's depreciated, cost is less than it was last year, but the demand for that product outstripped the depreciation of that particular home.
So the person sells their house, they don't have an RPR. So now the lawyer says they need an RPR. So they come in for compliance and they've got a double garage that you didn't know about. So now you make them pay for the permit in order to get the compliance stamp, but you can't go back and collect those taxes for the last ten years?
Permitting, and that's beyond my scope, would I assess that garage? Yes.
Now you will because you know it's there.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we try to catch as much of that type of thing in reinspection as we can. So, I mean, hopefully every garage is permitted, but.
Okay, are we good to go on?
Yes, please. Okay, assessment cycle. I won't read through the exact cycle, but there's a kind of a cyclical nature to our job and to how assessments are done and it's outlined here. I did touch on the July first date is a big date. Actually, the next slide is pertinent. Two dates that are very important in that cycle as far as the valuation. July first that we talked about at length. The other legislated date that's important is December thirty-first as a condition date. I'll give the physical condition of that property. Very common example of that is new construction. So houses being built, in my example, this house isn't completed till November in whatever given year. Well, I have to value that property as of July. It wasn't done in July. But the condition date, December thirty-first, it was done. So in this calendar, in this year, a home built in my example that was completed November twenty twenty, I think I used November, November twenty twenty-four, I have to figure the market value of that property as of July, but the condition of that property for that valuation is December thirty-first. So in this example, the house that was completed in November would be assessed as fully complete.
You don't have to have an occupancy permit before it's fully complete?
That's, I would suggest that, like, that we use occupancy permits to help us determine when homes are complete. We also do many inspections of homes. And so, again, let's say, let's say it wasn't quite complete, right? Ninety percent complete for year end, then I would assess it as such, ninety percent for year end. Okay? Assessment complaints. There's three basic levels of assessments complaints that can occur. We call them LARB and CARB are generally the ones we deal with, as with Wildrose. LARB being your residential properties, CARB composite board being your non-residential or multi-res. There's also, as you guys may know, Land and Property Rights Tribunal, that's DIP and equalized. That's a bit, those are not dealt with by our specific company. Process, how those are handled. I won't go through in detail, but there's legislated dates that give us guidelines on how the rights of the property owner to submit information, the rights of the assessment department or company to respond to that. And I think an important piece of this slide is that once that board hears that complaint, their decision is binding for that year. Okay. Now, I'm going to hope to go through an example of a property. This one I picked Wildflower Ranch Estates. And go through that. So Strathmore has many different neighborhoods, of course, that we look at and they're generally defined by the type of homes within. Not, you know, that's not a, that's a guideline. Where we look at sales within that specific neighborhood and property types within that specific neighborhood to help us identify market value of those properties within the neighborhood. I don't expect anyone to be able to read much of this, but this is a screenshot of our software. It's showing, if you can read, it's highlighted the Wildflower Ranch Estates neighborhood. Single-family homes tells me there's a hundred and sixty-four properties in this neighborhood meeting that criteria. And the chart below shows sales of single-family homes. This is land valuation, sorry. And the sales that occurred within that neighborhood. So when valuing land, yellow dots are true vacant land sales. They appear blue to me. Blue dots are what we would call extracted values. So we peel off the value of the improvement to get the land. That helps us with, as you'd outlined, we have a land value and an improvement value. This is looking at the land. And then the box shows our median that we're tested on, middle sale price. Of that graph, we've hit right on a hundred percent of that. Then I.
So if we, say we were to go into a recession and everybody's property value dropped fifty thousand each.
Yeah.
The assessment's never gonna drop, right? It's always just gonna stay there? You don't ever drop an assessment?
Of course, we would drop them. They're a reflection of the market value at that time. So if sales then show that, in your example, the property, a specific property type has dropped fifty thousand, the sales will show that and the assessments will go down.
So the assessments will take the same curves as a resale market?
Yes, we're using, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to my example. So I've just picked a property that sold in Wildflower. This particular home is described on the right side. It's a bungalow-style home. It's, this particular property sold in June of twenty twenty-four, sorry. We reviewed, we have access as assessors to MLS data. That's the multiple listing service that Realtors use to market properties. We have the full version of that program where we can see sold, we can see sold properties. We can see properties after they've been listed and have sold. In this particular one, we looked at, so this property type is considered a semi-custom bungalow at the top. That's the five-five rating if we're kind of reading through and don't understand what that coding means. We would look at five-fives in the city or town, sorry, and then look at Wildflower. This particular property sold at an assessment to sale ratio of ninety-six percent. That property is then part of the greater analysis of that property type within Wildflower. So again, in, this is where we're looking at the improvement. As, so why I mentioned the five-fives, that's highlighted in orange at the top. There happens to be sixty-three of those type of homes in that neighborhood. Twenty-four properties of that type sold in the last three years. Then at the bottom, again, I don't expect you guys to know or care too much about coding. The line in orange is referencing bungalows, that's a zero means. There's fourteen bungalows, five of them sold in the last three years. We applied a hundred and sixteen percent adjustment to that particular property type to arrive at a median of ninety-seven point one percent on those properties. So again, Counselor had asked earlier about whether it matters whether you're a bungalow, a bi-level, two-story, so on so forth. In this example, at the bottom, in orange, structure zero happens to be bungalows. Structure two happens to be by-levels. Structure nine happens to be two-stories. And then it shows information on all those different property types. If there weren't sufficient market data on by-levels, for example, we may look to just what that neighborhood itself did, right? So let's say we had five bungalow sales and no by-level sales. That doesn't mean that by-level sales didn't move with the market. They just didn't happen to sell within that window. That's an extreme example. There would be over three years, hopefully, sales of those types, but we would look to the greater neighborhood and how did that neighborhood move? So they would then be applied with the same market as other similar houses. Hopefully, that gives some more context to the earlier. Then I'll move on to assessment, audit and compliance. So once we've gone through this process, that was an example of one, started with one property and then looked at that property and its neighborhood and how it was assessed. That's why I said I'd probably come back to this slide about asset. We're obligated to send our assessments into the Alberta government for review and audit. Again, they're looking, does our data meet in those stratifications? That ninety-five to one oh five regulation of where those assessments should be? Pulled this from our annual audit report for twenty twenty-four, assessment year twenty twenty-four, this year's tax year. So this starts very high level. So it's talking about the residential assessments. We're at ninety-six point eight percent, whereas non-residential property is ninety-seven point seven percent. Median, that's again, a median. Then because there's, this next one gives a bit more detail. So it breaks down your residential property into different stratifications. And they want to ensure that each one of those stratifications also meet audit, the ninety-five to one oh five. Also shows, so when they talk about quartiles, as you can see, line one, quartile one for residential property, these are properties that are your lower cost, lower resale value, obviously. And then quarter two, three and four is the higher value. What you wanna see there is, you know, a consistent approach. We're not under-assessing higher-value homes and over-assessing lower-value homes or any of the like. And then also you wanna see that we're not over or under assessing any one given property type. The same report is looked at for non-residential property. Again, we're judged by the different categories therein. A lot fewer sales on the non-residential side, which you would expect to see. So really, they're breaking it down by a category type, industrial property, vacant property. Looks like there was no sales of special purpose and then retail and office property. As maybe a piece of clarification, column three, number of IOV. And IOV is indicators of value, these are sales essentially. And again, must be within ninety-five to one oh five. So annual assessment change. What did we actually see in Strathmore? So when I say twenty-three to twenty-four, those are assessment years. So that's from twenty-three being last year, twenty-four being this year. These are the percent changes that we've seen. This is the average that everyone's interested in. Again, this is just strictly an average. Thirteen point eight percent increase on residential property as a whole. Non-residential property fifteen, three, two, and the total combined just shy of fourteen percent. And that summarizes the slides that I have, but I'm of course open to more questions if there are some there.
Does anyone have any questions, further questions? Counselor Peterson, are you gonna ask about poverty flats?
I'm not, there's no questions to be asked, Your Worship. My only question is, the one that came up regularly was why residents who were asked, or who had requested reassessment would sign a nondisclosure?
Yeah, I had someone ask me that. I'm not a lawyer. My, I guess I can tell you my interpretation of the, we have a form that we ask owners to sign. It has a nondisclosure portion in the legal mumbo jumbo. My interpretation of that and how I described it, it's largely, this form was designed for non-residential properties where you may have, on the non-residential side, you have larger value properties. These larger value properties are often represented by, as commonly known, tax agents. Tax agent might represent, for example, they might represent a Royal Bank and an ATB. The nondisclosure is that if they're dealing with us specifically on the ATB property.
You're not disclosing to unauthorized.
To the other party.
Unauthorized parties, yeah. That I totally get.
That, yeah.
I guess what was confusing to people in the community was, you know, when you can go and look up a property value anywhere, anytime, but when properties were being reassessed, the property owners were being asked to sign these and they were concerned about it.
Yeah.
And I think the question that most often come to me that I couldn't answer was, well, once we know, does that mean we can't tell the rest of our neighbors that they have to go to the town office to find out? And so, you know, that seemed problematic.
Yeah, and I had a discussion with one property owner, again, it might be the one you're referencing. And I had said at that point, like, and again, not being a lawyer, there's different reasons assessments can get revised. Some can be truly an error, right? We've assessed a property for basement finish that didn't have it or had a pool, doesn't have it or a multitude of reasons. Can also be, you know, possibly a misclassification of a property. It can be, a property goes from taxable to exempt based off a tenancy. It has an exempt tenant move into a condo, build a condo strip, retail condo strip, that's then not taxable. There's a multitude of reasons for revisions to happen. In discussion, I said, you know, often that change, if it's not a black and white type situation, it's possibly part of a negotiation to get to a value that's agreeable by both parties. And when there's a negotiation, that negotiation should be kept confidential as well. And then lastly, I'll just, the other piece about signing the form that maybe goes beyond specifically confidentiality. I like the form as a contractor to the municipality. It gives me and the homeowner some assurance that we both have a signed contract, if you will, that this revision will happen. So they can have assurance that me as a contractor will then send that forward to the municipality. And I have their agreement that they've agreed to that revised value that I can then send forward to the municipality.
And I certainly appreciate the answer to the question, you know, especially with regards to commercial versus residential. Makes absolute perfect sense. And I think that for the comfort zone of the residential. And I think that, that for the comfort zone of, of the residential side, that they are, are not breaching any kind of confidentiality agreement by sharing their assessment with their neighbors.
Right, no, no, it's public information.
Thank you very much, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
But the public has full access to the tax assessment. I just had a buyer that came to the table with all twelve assessments for all the houses around the listing. You don't have to, you don't even have to be a taxpayer, you just have to know the address.
Okay, yes.
So, why would you have to sign a form on the other part of it versus the online part?
I, I don't, I guess the reasons describe, I just described, but I'm sorry, I'm, like...
Like, I thought tax assessment, online, is public information to everybody and anybody.
Yes.
And you're saying when they come into the town, though, they have to sign a form?
No, when they're looking to get their, no, anyone can, I, I assume, I think it's...
Only if they're appealing it, they have to sign a form?
No.
Okay, I'm misled, sorry.
I think, yeah, I think we have a disconnect, I think, so, no, I'm asking them to sign the form in the case of a revision, right? Not, if you want to come in and know and assess value, that's public, apply, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the gentlemen? Thank you for your presentation and your ability and willingness to answer all those questions, appreciate it.
For sure, thank you, council and administration for your time, we appreciate it. I'd also welcome, I mean, if there are further questions, we're, we're more than willing to address any others that may arise in the future. So, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much. We move now to item six point four, land use bylaw, mending bylaw number twenty-four dash fourteen, garden and garage suites. So, today is a review, and I believe Chuck is going to be presenting, and also bringing forward a few options that could be considered when it does come back for us to discuss and debate. So, tonight is, is kind of an information session, we don't necessarily want to debate each other tonight in the committee of the whole, or get into a real brouhaha. Chuck?
Thank you, Your Worship, I have a brief presentation that, which summarizes the report, which starts on page seventy-three if council wishes, or we can jump right into discussion.
Sure.
Your, Your Worship, will we go right into discussion? I think that there is a fulsome explanation in your report, and we've all seen it, that's what you were referencing, right? Yeah, I think we can just go into discussion.
Councillor Peterson, did you want to continue?
Yeah, you know what, the, the biggest question I had, you know, and maybe in terms of all of this was, you know, what would be, I, I struggle because I see, I see the fears that people have in our community being driven by very, very real issues that are happening in the city of Calgary. And I, I think I, I asked Jamie before, you know, and, and he's like, I don't know, we don't have to deal with Calgary, and that was a really legitimate answer. But, you know, I, I guess I, I am, I guess I want reassurances that would, that, that the existing bylaw and the proposals for shifts or changes to that, neither of them represent that blanket rezoning that's happening in the city of Calgary. And I'm sorry that I, that I so messed up the question before with my editorializing, but I, I guess that, that remains my, my bottom line.
Yeah, the, the short answer is no, this is not a blanket rezoning, like Calgary did.
It's not the same.
No, it's not the same. It's not the same.
Deputy Mayor Mitzner?
So, can you just clarify for myself and for the members of the public? We haven't totally taken this out, it's still a discretionary use. So, if the garden suite meets the criteria, the lot size, the parking, there's still an option to do it, it hasn't been totally removed.
Thank you, councillor. Today, you can apply for a discretionary use development permit for garden suites, it hasn't been removed yet.
But is the intent to take it out a discretionary too?
That's what this discussion is. The discussion, yeah, but that tonight is removing it as a discretionary use from our bylaws, so then councillor, the decision-makers, on a site-by-site land use basis.
So, through the chair, the motion that was put forward was to make this, take this out as a discretionary use and come back to the committee of the whole to discuss that bylaw amendment. So, Chuck has prepared a draft land use bylaw amendment, removing garage and garden suites as discretionary uses. Now, it's before council to, to discuss that this evening, if that's where you want to go.
I would be comfortable with discretionary use regarding this issue, I just, my feeling is with the land availability that we have and the subdivisions that are coming on stream and the multi-unit housing that's also coming on stream, stream, and with the number of people who've applied for these and, and been interested in these being solo, to me, it seems to lend itself to more of a site-specific approval with council being more involved as far as how neighborhoods go. So, I would be okay with site-specific and discretionary use. Deputy Mayor, then councillor Langmaid.
I'd like to see it left as a discretionary use because our planning department are the people with the expertise and the knowledge, and I think the perimeters have been very well laid out, and it's not a job for council to overrule the development people, thank you.
The only thing I would add is that we're the closest contact to residents, they, they don't necessarily, I mean, they'll complain to the planning department, but we're the ones who hear from a lot of different people. So, I could see council being involved at times, or in, involved in the process. Councillor Langmaid, councillor Peterson?
Thank you very much. So, so it is currently a discretionary land use, and I think what we're discussing is, is removing the discretionary land use and putting it squarely on the, on the shoulders of council, on e, on each decision being made. So, it's not, I just wanted to clarify that, it's, would not, no longer be a discretionary use, it would be a council decision. I, I'm hearing the concerns from residents primarily over parking and overcrowding and issues such as that, however, I'm not, I, I don't, don't remain convinced that this is the answer to that issue. One, because, because the, the applications have been so low, and also because in the same zones that we permit garage and garden suites, we also permit secondary suites, which is same impact as a garden and garage suite in terms of population, you're adding in an additional living unit. So, removing garden and garage suites doesn't entirely resolve the solution, this, this apparent issue of, of increasing population and increasing the density of our communities, it just removes a housing option, is all we're doing. And I hear, and I also hear the discussion about additional housing units coming into the community, particularly multifamily units such as apartment buildings. But, but what that doesn't address for me is that garden and garage suites fill a specific niche and a specific housing need in our community that a multi-unit housing option doesn't necessarily include. A garden or garage suite is somewhere where you can put your grandma and have her ten, you know, twenty feet away from your house, so that if you don't notice that she didn't turn the light on in the morning, you can run over and go, hey grandma, time to get up. Or to have a twenty-year-old that's able to live on your property because they can't afford to move out because rents and, and property values are, are out of reach for them. So, these are, these, or, and the other option to this is that it provides an income option for homeowners, in turning, you know, a potential garden or garage suite into, into a rental income unit. So, while I hear that, yes, we do have more multifamily units coming onto the market in Strathmore, and that is a sorely needed housing option here in town, those don't fulfill the same need in our community that garden and garage suites do.
Thank you. Again, I don't want to debate or, or push this too much, but I think that's the, and I was a big proponent of this, I think that's the philosophy I really bought into, that, you know, grandparents, in-laws could be in the carriage suite, a young couple could be helping a seniors couple. But in actual practice, I drive, because I live in Strathmore Lakes, I drive by the carriage homes two, three, sometimes four times a day in my neighborhood. And it has morphed, evolved into workers living in the carriage suite and in the big house, and the parking is atrocious, and, and Strathmore Lakes Bend goes around a corner. So, the parking is very bad, and I, I don't think it stayed as a situation where, you know, grandma's living in your backyard, it has, it has the potential to change into something a little more unwieldy in the neighborhood. And so, that's why I, you know, I brought up this idea, I'm, I'm leaning more towards discretionary use, but I do have some concerns about this. Councillor Peterson?
So, so just, just before I go to the point, so, so you're saying that those, those dwellings that were built in, in Strathmore Lakes with the legal garden, garages and suites are causing issues in the community today?
Well, I drive by them...
Yeah, yeah, you would know, I get that.
And the parking, at certain periods of time, there are big trucks with duly wheels, and I don't know a hundred percent for certainty that it's a lot of workers in every one of them, but the parking is, is, is not very good as you round that bend. And I, I can see how having a carriage suite, like another house, for example, in Strathmore Lakes, could move from an older couple with one vehicle to, to young guys with trucks, with two trucks, and then the house could have three people with trucks and workers. So, it, it can morph because as the house gets sold, you never know who's going to buy the property and what that property is going to be used for, and how many parking spots could be used. Deputy Mayor Mitzner, and, oh, sorry, councillor Peterson?
Yeah, I, so, so the, I, I, I hear you, and, and I, and I understand that, you know, but, you know, as somebody who lives on a street where there's a school of a thousand and a daycare next door, and, you know, I really don't feel your pain. But I, I get it. But what I, what I do think...
You did buy the house across the street from a school?
I did, indeed, I did. The other thing I think that, that was, that was key to me when, in, in looking over the report today, was a statement that says, staff have not received any applications for garden or garage suites in over ten years, and that remains so today, correct? So, I think, I think that's really key, and, you know, when we look at this, and so we're sort of on the cusp of a new era, we're hearing everywhere that it is completely unaffordable for young people to buy homes, and that, so, so either we have multifamilies living in homes where they have, you know, we can't prevent the fact that, that three generations are going to live in one home and, and that six of them are going to have vehicles. But what we can do is that we can bring property values up by allowing people to buy, or, or sorry, to build on these big lots, especially in the downtown. And so, where property values are relatively low, and, and building on a big lot is preferable to having to build a new home and buy land, that it also gives grandparents, multi-generational people, opportunity to get into the housing market. Because of those things, I'm, I'm more leaning to, to that option two, you know, I, I would prefer to leave it alone, I prefer to leave it exactly the way it is. I, I like it, I like the way that staff structured it and all of those kinds of things, and can talk about that and debate later on, but I'm also willing to look at that option too, you know, that, those things where we wanted to utilize those big lots, and we wanted to increase the density in the downtown, and we want to provide, you know, elderly citizens with options to maximize their, their opportunities to stay in their own homes and perhaps provide their children with opportunities to also buy into the housing market. So, that's kind of where I am, Your Worship, I, I would definitely look at option two. Thank you.
Thank you. To, to possibly streamline our approach tonight, would it be worth it for, for, for council to possibly work towards eliminating a couple and then having two options come to us at a meeting where we could actually fully debate and vote? Does that make any sense? Or not? Councillor Wegener?
Councillor Middler.
We haven't heard from you yet.
I just have a couple of questions for you, Chuck. So, one of the things, if people were to apply for these, are there any forms of architectural controls that are in place as far as what they can build, where they can build it, how high they can build it, that would have to be followed?
Thank you, council. As, as strict architectural guidelines, I would say no, but on page seventy-nine of eighty-five, there's a list of A, B, C, D, number J, and this is part of the discretionary of the approving authority. I think these words are interchangeable, a garden or garage suite shall have residential character and shall be finished in a manner compatible with the character and appearance of the principal building. So, there's some interpretation there, but as far as strict architectural guidelines, there aren't any, thank you.
Okay, yeah, that was, I mean, I, I'll have some other questions here later, but that was just, that was, that was one of them, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Mitzner?
So, do you not, you have a maximum footprint for construction for the lot size regardless of whether there's a carriage suite or just a house, correct?
Thank you, councillor, like, there's a, there's a maximum, or sorry, there's a, there's a minimum, or sorry, a garden suite, garage suite shall not be constructed on any site less than four hundred meters squared in area, so there is a site parameter, site-size parameter there.
Okay. When we were at a convention in Canmore, actually Lethbridge and Banff have concept plans where there's a carriage house, cookie cutter, A, B, C or D, that the towns prepared, and this would fit on this lot, and this would be the requirements. But I echo everything that councillor Langmaid said, and the garden suites and the secondary basement suites, I believe are very, very essential component in our downtown core as part of our revitalization of the downtown and creating the walkability product that we wanted. So, a lot of those people may not even have cars, but you can control the number of units or the parking stall like you did when the one on First Dav, the modular home, when you brought that one as, and I think we're just, we've created a nonexistent product, and if we need to save it as a discretionary use, I'm okay with that, but I do not want to lose it for the community, thank you.
Thank you, deputy, thank you, deputy mayor. Chuck, a question for you, new development areas, and I, I guess I just want, I'm, I'm actually quite comfortable with the downtown area as far as looking at this for density and allowing options for people to stay in homes and you've got the big lot. But with the new development areas, a lot of times our lots are smaller nowadays than they were, so I, I'm also a little concerned about, you know, and also I'm concerned about people who have, you know, they've got their lot and they've planned their, their house, and then they find out later that there's going to be a house and a carriage suite next to them, and the lot isn't very big and the parking isn't that good. I'm always thinking about how some residents could be impacted by this. So, why would we consider new development areas, and this is just because I'm fairly dumb, why would we consider new development areas when the, the lots themselves, say, are smaller than downtown or other areas?
Thank you, Your Worship, it's a good question. I, I think it, it can vary per phase would be my answer, like, a developer could come in with a, a phase of development that maybe caters specifically to this, they would have bigger lots in that phase proposed, and then someone would be a little bit more aware of what they were buying into at that time. I, I do see your point, though, Your Worship. Thank you.
Councillor Wegener?
Again, I think I might have answered my own question here from before also. The one concern that I do have about it is the height, so it says in garage suites, the garage suite shall not exceed the height of the principal building on the same site. So, with a two-story home, as long as they don't exceed that height of a two-story home, it, it meets the, it meets the criteria.
I would say you're correct, Your Worship, yes, thank you.
Okay, and so whether the garage be in the front or the back, it's, I guess it's, it's, it's the same thing, so that was just my concern about building extremely high garage suites, thank you.
Councillor Langmaid, and then deputy mayor Mitzner?
Thank you, I, I just want to add a, a little bit of context and make sure that I understand this correctly, just specifically to the conversation about keeping these units downtown, which, which I agree with, I'd like to actually keep them throughout the town. But there's actually a, a pretty limited number of, of lots downtown that you could actually build these on. Because it's restricted... on. Because it's restricted to lots that are zoned typically R1, R1N, R1S, these types of lots, whereas the majority of downtown is not zoned as that. There's actually a very limited number of properties that this is actually a viable solution for in the downtown core. So if anything, I think what I'm hearing tonight is actually an argument that it should be expanded within the downtown overlay area, and that we want to see more of them in the downtown overlay area than we actually have approved in it right now, because there aren't that many R1-rated lots in the downtown area. It just, it's something I'm hearing in the discussion, is that we're supporting this for downtown, but really downtown, it actually has a very, a very limited impact. And perhaps the discussion, and one of the options that we should be looking at is, is actually expanding this in the downtown overlay district, past just the R1, R1S, R1N zoning that it's currently unapproved discretionary use for.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Mitzner, and then Counselor Peterson?
So the majority of the builders that are coming in now are searching for narrower lots, shorter lots, more dwellings per land. Downtown is a commodity with 120-foot-deep lots. And I think, echo again, Counselor Langmaid, we need to take advantage of that, because they do have the rear alleys, they do have the extra 20 feet, and I think this product, that's why we approved it the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, coming back to our approach in the future meeting, are there a couple of options we'd like to just remove from the list and focus on two? Like, we have option three and option four sitting there as well in front of us. I'm just looking ahead to the next time this comes to us. Counselor Peterson?
No, let's just stay with your line. I think that's a great idea. I think I would, I would like to look at an expanded, you know, if I was going to make any changes at all, my preference would be none. But if I was going to look at a compromise, it would be somewhere in option two with expanded notations as to what Counselor Langmaid spoke about, because one of the places where, where we have what you are describing is in Westmount, for instance. And so in those, in those older areas, and certainly west of downtown south and north, also have more capacity than downtown south. So, you know, I think looking at some perspective of that. The other thing that's happening in terms of, you know, in the CR, where you can also do this, you know, there, in our area, because of proximity to highway in the downtown south, I think that, you know, properties that aren't zoned CR will probably, you'll probably see people coming for rezoning applications in the very near future. I know that you've anticipated that for a long time already, and that will be another, another thing that will be happening.
Thank you. Counselor Langmaid?
In terms of maybe moving the discussion on a little forward and answering your question, if we're looking at eliminating or setting preferences for options in front of us, my preference would be for option four. But if not that, then I echo what Counselor Peterson said, that I, if option four is not the option to move forward, then I would be interested in option two amended to actually expand the number of properties that these could be built on in the downtown overlay district, specifically in that area.
And maybe that would be almost like a way to have this as a trial, almost like to float it as a trial thing, to see how it works in a couple of areas that potentially have back alleys, that have the big, deep lots, that, you know, that have the ability to have people there and still not affect parking too much. Yeah. So does anyone know where we stand right now, or where we feel comfortable coming back to? Do we want option two to come to us with the inclusion of Westmount in the downtown area? Counselor Langmaid?
Oh, sorry, I forgot.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Mitzner?
I'd like to see option two with the addition of the Westmount in the downtown area, and I'd like to see it stay in the land use bylaw.
Would you be comfortable removing the new development area portion?
What, okay, what do you mean, the new development?
Well, it's got it as part of it. In downtown and new development areas, so new builds, new subdivisions.
Yeah, but they're not downtown. There's no new areas downtown.
Maybe I'm not reading the wording correctly. Research best practices of adding them to the downtown and new development areas. So that would be-
Well, that would be like saying you can do this in Lakeside, and you can do this downtown. No, I don't agree with that.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, too. So are we comfortable with having this come forward with Westmount and downtown and removing the new development areas? Maybe not. Counselor Langmaid? No, no, I'm not.
I'm sorry. I didn't think to consider the new development areas, and just the option I want to put in front of council to kind of chew on a little bit, is that, I hear what you're saying about Strathmore Lakes Bend being an issue, but I can see the opportunity where a new community is built with these in mind, where it can work in the community, where they're maybe developed with some lessons learned from the one, from the initial ones that were built on Strathmore Lakes Bend, where we could have a new community built with these incorporated successfully. So I would like, I would like to see that as an option that might be able to be moved forward and be considered in the future for new developments, because I think it could be a successful thing with some lessons learned to build a whole new community with these planned as part of it.
Again, I would, I would be really hesitant to support it, just because I've seen how it's evolved in my own neighborhood in the last, in the last 12 years. Deputy Mayor Mitzner?
Can we not keep this specific to downtown and Westmount areas, and if there's any new developers that wish to do this, can they not do it in their area structure plan and have it approved at the time they decide to develop? Thank you.
Did you want to weigh in on that, Chuck?
Sure, that's a possibility, Counselor Mitzner. Every phase of development, say in Edgefield or Lakewood, would require a land use amendment moving forward, so we could include those as part of the phase or the land use amendment at that time, if that's what council wants at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. So are we comfortable, then, with option two coming back to us? With those? Okay. All right, good. I'm glad you can live with that, because I'm not too, I wasn't too thrilled about that last, the new development area part. Okay. So you know what, you have a sense of where we are?
Yes, thank you, council. Not to confuse anybody, but just, just to confirm, we can kind of remove the stuff from 2414, the secondary suites bylaw stuff immediately, and then we'd research kind of downtown and Westmount in the future and bring that to a future discussion.
I think that's where we're at, everybody. Is that correct?
Are we, can we not leave the secondary suites?
So secondary suites are gonna-
Like basement suites?
Not affected.
Right.
Yeah.
But the secondary suite is the carriage house?
Garden suite.
Secondary suite is basement.
Okay, so why, are you removing it? It's a different bylaw?
Well, option two says, we can kind of rescind the bylaw that receives some attention, write some policy to remove that, and then come back to council with some more research about downtown and whatever council would like at that time.
Okay.
And at this point, there's not a huge rush on this, because you've had very few applications come forward?
None. Yeah, you're correct, your worship.
Jamie, I saw you light up, too. Not light up, but you know what I mean.
Sorry, I was just going to clarify that what Chuck was sharing was it's going to take a little longer to make the new amendment, and we can only do one bylaw at a time, so we can do the reversal relatively quickly, but the new bylaw will take a little bit of time. And we are running out of time, believe it or not.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
There's not as many meetings as you'd like coming forward.
Yeah, thank you very much, everybody. So we move now to item seven, question and answer period. Oh, Denise, Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. I appreciate that council gave me the opportunity, and I'd like to take this time to extend sincere condolences to the Yellow Old Woman family, and to the Sichica Nation on the passing of Natie Ksisstaki Aake, Eve Yellow Old Woman, who passed away last week. Even her husband had 15 children of their own and took many, many more into their home. And when she retired at the age of 71, she became very involved in politics in both Canada and the United States, as she was called to sit on the elders' advisory committee in what was then called the Indian Government. Many people sought her out over all those years for advice and direction, and for her beautifully rich stories. Her heart and passion has always been for the Sichica Zatapi, but she was also immensely kind to the allies of her people, and many people in our community know her and love her. Eve Yellow Old Woman was a warrior who fought her whole life to ensure that the Sichica people had a seat at the table. And so it's a really proud time for me that the councils that I've been privileged to sit on have carried on her work. At the time of her passing, Eve was the oldest member of the Sichica Nation. Her celebration of life is at the Sichica Arbor tomorrow. She was incredibly well-loved, and she will be sorely missed. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you for that, Counselor Peterson. Any other questions or comments? Then I will adjourn the meeting at 9:57.